The special meeting of the ZB 2015 adjustment for the township of Bellville from May 28, 2015 will now come to order. Clark, call the roll.
ZB.
Here.
Del Gersio.
Here.
Lattalana.
Yeah.
Smith.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Mafucci.
Here.
Alano.
Yeah.
Del Gersio.
Here. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I wanted to make sure you were here.
Look, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in accordance with Sunshine Law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, notice was given to the press in accordance with the Open Public Act.
Okay. Okay, let's go right to our first case if we're ready.
We're ready.
ZB 2015-09.
Good evening, Frank J. Coserelli appearing on the Capitol. For your developers, partners with Group D Development.
For the record, let me state that I did review proof of publication. State here to be on the record.
Okay, so this is 78-102 Washington Avenue. It's a proposal to amend to five stories on Washington Avenue and six stories facing the rear of the property, where seven stories facing Washington Avenue and eight stories facing the rear, which was previously approved by ZB 2005-02. Also is changing the restaurant to 37 and 50 square feet of commercial space, or is it staying as a restaurant?
Staying as a restaurant.
So that's an error. That's changed.
That's an error.
Okay, so it's staying as a restaurant, the same amount of square footage?
Same amount of square footage.
Okay, 3,750 square feet. So that's a correction. Okay. Now, so we have this straight that it doesn't have to be rehearsed. This has been done at ZB 2005-02, but the state has extended the amount of time that they have to have this approval. Am I correct, gentlemen?
I've written to Mr. Di Lorenzo about this specific approval, which is the ZB 2005-2 approval, where the use variance was granted. And he confirmed that, in fact, the use variance continues under the Permit Extension Act and whatever other laws they've--
I just wanted to get that on the record so nobody would have any problems. Plus, after that, we did approve a site plan.
It did approve a site plan, and we are--this is essentially--
An amendment to that site.
An amendment to the site plan. So it's largely an engineering case because we are--what we've done is we've actually reduced the mass of the building by reducing it from eight stories to six stories in total. If you count the parking deck that was previously approved, it was three stories of parking above and below grade, and then there were five stories of dwelling units above that. What we've done is we've reconfigured the building. It's the same footprint. It occupies exactly the same area. The parking is going to be on two levels, one with ingress and egress on grade from Washington Avenue, one with ingress and egress on grade from William Street.
But the record shows that Mr. Giudano has arrived.
Sorry, late here.
Want to start again?
Right, so to reiterate what we've said, Mr. Giudano, so that you are fully first on the record, is that this is actually a continu--this case is seeking a modification, and we are seeking to modify the plan, not to change the use that was previously approved, but to change essentially the bulk of the building. The parking is remaining the same. We actually might have improved the parking configuration a little bit better. The restaurant use will continue per the plan, the approval that was previously granted in 2005 and 2007. And we've actually shrunk the building in terms of its height by reducing it by one story.
And you kept the same amount of units?
Same amount.
Am I correct? And the same square footage of the restaurant, but I don't know if there was a change or that there may have been an effect then, but you do not need a variance, from what I understand, anymore for parking?
Not for restaurant use.
Right. At that time, I thought they may have, and now they don't have.
I don't think it--
And eliminated it then, too?
Yeah, I don't think--
All right.
Even though it was--
My recollection--
That ordinance, which, if you want to tie it back to a specific event, it was when Osola Dominion--
I know.
And there was an issue with parking at Osola Dominion, and the town council passed an ordinance at that time that no parking was required for any restaurant use in the town.
Okay.
So that's--
Since we're reducing the, not the density, but the use, we're taking down two stories, all it needs is a majority vote of the board.
Okay, so the first witness we're going to call is Mr. Ramo De Popolo.
Mr. Coserelli, could you, so that we'll know where you're going, how many witnesses do you have?
Two. Mr. De Popolo is going to testify on behalf of the applicant, and Mr. Perry Frenzel, who's a professional engineer, will testify with regard to the site plan issues.
Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth.
Please.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Ramo De Popolo, D on, couple of P L P.
Thank you.
Mr. De Popolo, you're the original applicant who appeared before the board starting in 2005 with regard to the case number ZB 2005-2 for the premises known as 78-102 Washington Avenue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And at that time, did you appear before the board, obtain a use variance for the development of an 80-unit apartment building combined with a restaurant use at this location of 78-102 Washington Avenue?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Can I interject, and I think because me and the attorney discussed this before, and we want to put this on the record. I want to make it clear that Mr. De Popolo is a former member of this board. Does anybody have a problem ruling objectively before the law?
No.
No, okay, I just want that on the record, that's all, so let me bring it up there.
Thank you.
Mr. De Popolo, another point in time, did you apply to the board for a site plan approval whereby the lots, which were designated as, in block 67, as 18, 20, 23, 24, were consolidated into a single lot?
That is correct.
So now you get one tax bill which reflects that this is one large tract of land. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And Mr. De Popolo, I direct your attention to, I'm going to ask you to mark this--
Is this a copy of what we have?
It's a copy of what we have.
It's not been modified anyway.
It's not been modified.
We don't need to mark it, just refer to the page.
These are the architectural plans that were submitted to the board by Ate Architecture of New York, Michael Lozowski. Mr. Lozowski is indicating that this, the project will consist of a total of 48 one-bedroom apartments, is that correct?
Yes.
And there'll be 32 two-bedroom apartments. And how many floors will this occupy?
Four.
How many parking floors are there?
Two.
I'm going to show you what's been marked as, or what's identified as A2 on the Ate Architecture plans. Is that a typical floor plan?
That's a typical floor.
And is this the typical parking layout?
Correct.
Showing the Washington Avenue layout and the William Street layout.
That is correct.
This would be the William Street layout on the lower part of the plan, isn't that correct?
Correct.
Because the entrance comes in and out of William Street, and this would be the parking proposal for--
On Washington.
--on the Washington Avenue site, where the ingress and egress comes from the southmost portion of the building. Isn't that correct? Mr. De Popolo, other than when you first obtained approval on behalf of Group B, the building was tall, wasn't it?
Yes.
Now we're proposing a different height building, isn't that right?
That is correct.
How many floors of residential dwelling units are there?
Four.
Four floors. And how many floors of parking?
Two.
So it's a total of six stories altogether, including the William Street grade site, before you had a total of eight, is that correct? Your sole proposal to use the area on the great Washington Avenue grade level part of the property at the William and Washington intersection for a restaurant purpose. Mr. De Popolo, is this project going to be built?
Yes.
They partnered up with a company called Premier Developers, and they're going to be working with you on this connection with the project, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, have you reviewed the, have you reviewed this application, and you understand that, let me rephrase that. Presently, how is the property used?
It's used as a used car dealer.
And is that used car dealership going to be abandoned when this project commences destruction?
That is correct.
Is the used car dealer presently on a month-to-month lease?
Correct.
Is that the reason that you can control that?
That is correct.
All right, so whatever approvals may have existed with regard to the use of that site as a used parking lot will now dissipate and be abandoned, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And that's once you start to pull your building permits and you start your demolition, correct?
That is correct.
I have no further questions, Mr. De Popolo.
Any questions by members of the board? Mr. Alano.
Same amount of units, correct?
That is correct.
What change configuration line? Is it more one bedroom now, or same configuration?
I believe they are smaller room.
Right.
Apartment is--
Same one-bedroom, same amount of one, same amount of two, right?
I think the mix is slightly--
It's slightly different because we've reduced it to there's more one bedrooms than there are two.
That's more, yes, but more one bedroom.
Can you tell us an exact total?
He said 40?
I think it was 40 and 40.
Forty, thirty-two.
Forty and thirty-two, exactly.
That's what it was.
Now--
Before was 40.
Forty and forty.
Correct.
So for me, I'm more, I'm happier with more one bedroom, as I'm sure I gave this to De Popolo a hard time about that last time, so I'm happier there, smaller, than small one bedroom. That's all the other question I have.
Yes, Mr. Mafucci.
I'm trying to remember back to the old plans. Was there a driveway going out to Washington Avenue then?
There was a driveway, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board? Questions by members of the public? Mr. Fran Antoni, name and address, please.
Benjamin Fran Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect Hill.
If you want to see the plans, you can come up.
No, I want to ask, how many total parking spaces?
I believe it is 152.
155.
155, I'm sure.
155?
Yes.
Now, the, I think you just testified that the question you were just asked, was there an entrance on Washington Avenue in the previous plans?
Yes.
There was?
Yes.
Sure, it wasn't just on William Street?
No.
Right.
Because we applied, that's why, you know.
And the, I heard testified that the Washington Avenue parking will be on grade?
Correct.
So that parking will all level the same grade of Washington Avenue?
Correct.
And how many parking spaces, metered parking spaces, will we lose for your access to the Washington Avenue parking lot?
I believe one.
Just one?
I believe on 300 feet, it is only one parking, one meter.
Well, with the Washington Avenue, will that be an entrance and exit?
Yes.
And only one parking spaces?
Well, it is only one meter.
It's 30, it's 30 feet from the curb cut and the dimension of the opening. The dimension of the opening is going to be about 20, and the curb cut, the curb cut should be 30. So whatever--
So it's 18 and 18.
Eighteen and eighteen.
It's 30 and 19 and 19, and everyone is--
There's existing driveways on there.
But there's already existing driveways, Mr. Fran Antoni.
Right.
So we're going to lose two. And on the William Street side, is that also ingress and egress?
Yes.
And that'll be below grade?
That is correct.
And the restaurant's on grade from Washington Avenue, too?
Yes.
Right? What will, a half of it?
3,750 square feet.
Yeah, but the parking, is that, that's on grade, is that the same level as the restaurant?
Yes.
So part of the building, the restaurant part, will be parking on Washington Avenue, sorry.
Correct.
Any other questions by members of the public? Any further questions by members of the board? Mr. Giudano.
The stipulations we had the last time, they would all still be in effect, like the cameras that were--
Yeah.
Yes. Unless we change it tonight.
No, I'm just curious. Everything that was previously made a condition, unless we change it tonight, remains. And I would also add, I think this is approved, at the car dealership, it'd be abandoned, so if it doesn't come back, I might just, once they start on the project--
Mr. Regal, we have no issue with that, so long as the abandonment coincides with pulling the demolition.
Absolutely. Any other questions? None. Okay, you may call your second witness.
Mr. Perry Frenzel. Mr. Frenzel, please, he's being offered as an expert, as a professional engineer.
With regard to this application, you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth.
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Perry Frenzel, F R E N Z E L.
Have you ever appeared before this board?
I haven't.
Why don't you give us a couple minutes of background?
Mr. Frenzel, remember I warned you about it, I didn't remember what your resume said, you told me.
Now's your time. I'm a graduate in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. That was granted in 1977. I've been a licensed professional engineer and professional planner of the state of New Jersey since 1983. Both of those licenses are current.
Then we could accept them later next time.
Have you ever appeared before in the board?
Many, many times.
Okay, can you name one or two?
Sure. Newark Farm, New Jersey City.
Perfect, good.
This is both a planner and an engineer.
Yes.
Yeah, I, we're really not going to go into the plan, because--
That's already been approved.
It's already been approved. We're going to try and stick, I'm trying to surgically present this, because I know it's a special. Mr. Frenzel, I'm going to come over here, and I'd ask you to come closer to the plan. First of all, so we're clear, Plan A1 on the easel, A2, A3, I think that's A3, are three pages, those are architectural plans, correct?
They are.
And they were prepared by Ate Architecture, is that not correct?
Ate Architecture by the architect Michael Lozowski.
And you relied on these plans in preparing the engineering plans that we've submitted to the board, which are entitled Site Plan for 100 Washington Avenue LLC, Block 8503, Lot 678910, which we now know as one single lot, correct?
That is correct.
And I would like to ask you, did you, in preparing for your testimony tonight, review the architectural plans and rely on the information that was contained in there and then re-verify the information based on your own observations?
Yes, we did.
How many units are being presented to the board this evening?
Total of 80 units. 48 would be one bedroom, and 32 would be two bedroom.
And based on that computation, that mix of one and two bedrooms, did you come up with a computation of the total parking requirement for the site?
Yes, we did.
Is that shown on your plan?
It's shown on the site plan sheet, which is the third sheet in the set.
Is it labeled in any way?
It's in the zoning table on the right side of the sheet. The heading is Parking Residential. Shows a calculation based on 1.8 spaces for one bedroom unit, two spaces for two bedroom there, for a total of 150 spaces.
Can I interject now? Can we square in Mr. Di Lorenzo, please?
Frank, with regard to this application, you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth.
Yes.
And for the record, Frank Lorenzo, zoning officer, construction official.
Of the township of Bellville. Mr. Di Lorenzo, based upon the computations that were just mentioned, do we need 1.8 parking spaces per unit, or do we need two based upon the town ordinance?
Well, the town is two. Yeah, R S I S is 1.8.
So which is required, that it doesn't need a, or will it need a variance?
It's the same variance you've already granted.
Yeah.
So we're relying on the fact that that variance continues, because the total number of units has not changed.
Okay.
And our contention is that we don't need to re-prove, we don't need to reintroduce proofs on the variance, we're just establishing that we've complied with the variance previously granted, and that's the purpose of this testimony.
That was 1.8.
Was 1.8 was the computation that was used in the last--
We provided 155.
We provided 155 in total. Mr. Frenzel, could you please testify?
Let me ask one more thing, Mr. Di Lorenzo, before you go. Mr. Di Lorenzo, on your denial letter dated March 26, okay, on the bottom where it says to follow in our variance approvals or any other variance approvals the board may find on the hearing, number two, see bulk variance, is that because it was commercial?
Right.
And therefore, the 12 are not required anymore, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I just want to get that on the record.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frenzel, what's the total number of parking spaces that are being provided in this plan?
155.
Now, I'd like to, just have you go through, page by page, in your plan, succinctly, well, let's go to the architectural plan. Mr. De Popolo testified that the, that Plan A2 in the Ate Architecture Plan shows a typical floor plan. And is that how you arrived at the count of the mix of ones and two bedrooms?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and A2 also shows the parking configuration, correct?
Correct.
And the parking configuration shows ingress and egress to the parking areas in the building, correct?
That is correct.
And you use that for purposes of developing your engineering plans, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay, now, let's go to your engineering plan. We're going to skip the very lovely colored first page with the area blue, and we're going to go to the first page of your plan set. Describe what's shown on the first page.
The second sheet is titled, it's titled Existing Conditions Removal Plan. This is very simply the survey of the property, showing the meets and bounds and physical features on the property and in the immediate vicinity of the property, and those features that would be removed as part of the demolition process in preparation for construction.
Is this largely a flat piece of property?
It's generally flat. It slopes slightly downward from the south to the north, the highest corner being in the southwest, and the point where the entrance would be on William Street about 12 feet.
So these existing conditions also would be altered, obviously, once this project is approved, or the board would approve this modification. Existing academy would be taken down, the existing building would be taken down, which is a small little structure in the middle of the property, and the excavation and grading would take place to start constructions. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Okay, let's go to the next page and finish.
What part was drawn up there? On William Street, doesn't the grade go down as you go east?
It does.
12 feet? 12 feet?
Yeah, from this point on, Washington Avenue to the lowest point on William, it's about 12 feet.
What about from the, on the corner, where the restaurant is down?
I believe from the restaurant down, it's probably about three to four feet.
Three to four feet, okay. Go ahead.
We can go to the next page. What did you, what does your plan show on the third page of the set?
The third page of the set is titled Site Plan, and this is the sheet that shows the outline of the building, and any improvements that are proposed as far as the streetscape in general. It shows the trash room on the lower level, that would be a compactor room where trash would be either collected individually or through chutes in the building, compacted, bagged, and then held until it was pickup day, when it's put out to the curb for pickup. It shows three points of entry into the building by pedestrians, this one being into the restaurant.
We're on the record, so when we say this one, we're talking at the northmost corner of the building, at the intersection of William and Washington.
That's correct.
Now, when you say the lower level, that's where the trash is going to be, that would be the lower level of the garage, am I correct?
That's correct.
Does that mean that the restaurant is two levels or one level?
One.
One.
All right, so can you explain how the garbage is getting down to the lower level?
Generally, in multifamily developments like this, there are one or two points of collection on each floor and a chute, probably because the compactor room is on this end, there'd probably be a point at that end of the corridor where people would simply drop their garbage into a chute and have it in this room.
Now, the garbage for the restaurant, will that be included in that?
I don't think it's gotten to the point of that discussion, but certainly could be.
We can comply with staff requirements on that issue.
Well, the reason is the garbage got to go someplace.
It's got to go someplace, and what we've, we've created a fairly large capacity facility here.
But it's at the lower level where this restaurant is, if that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay. It's going to have to be brought there somehow, and our view of it is that we'd rather have it in the lower level where it's parking and away, it's further away from the residential users, if we keep it there.
Well, I have no problem with that, I just wanted to--
Yeah, we're going to have--
--explaination of how we're going to do this, that's all.
There was no conveyor belt that I know of.
Parachute.
We're not doing parachutes, Mr. Alano says, but--
Well, will there be a connection to the chute from the upper garage level?
There probably will be--
Where it could be done?
--a point of, I think Mr. Frenzel was saying exactly that when he testified before, because if you come, there'll be, there'll be some area of this restaurant, this area which is called the restaurant, where it goes out into the garage. So there'll have to be a back entrance that'll have access to what'll be a drop into the trash facilities.
Again, the northly most entrance off of Washington Avenue would serve the restaurant area. The center point of entry is actually the core of the residential units above. It has an access stair, as well as two elevators for the residents to access. And the third point of entry on the southern end is the code-required second means of emergency entrance stair.
Now, you had mentioned in the passing that there was, what's shown on this page is some streetscape. I'm going to go back to the architectural plan, and I think what we want to look at is the third page, around the station. If we look at page A3 of the architectural plan, we'll see in the schematic level drawing that there's a series of trees that are shown on that. Is that the type of trees that, when we talk about streetscape, we're talking about those kinds of plantings?
Yes, it is. These are the trees that would be planted, as per shown, as shown on the landscape plan, that would also be planted according to the scheme shown on sheet A2, which depicts the paper concrete pattern-- which depicts the paper concrete pattern for the entire frontage of the building, the street bits, and the other streetscape features. That design according to the architect, uh, being in accordance with the township's streetscape.
Now, let's, so we'll go back to your plan. Go to the next page, please. Okay, what's next?
The next sheet is titled Grading and Drainage Plan. Uh, this particular sheet, um, in the normal plan set where we have green space and parking lots on the outside, would show, show the grading of the site, uh, the drainage features and how the water is captured on the surface. This site is basically covered 100% with building. So there is, uh, no particular drainage to be shown on this sheet. All of the drainage from the roof would be collected and discharged into the combined sewer in William Street. That is the, the general drainage scheme for the site.
Is there adequate water supply?
Uh, there is, the water main as shown on actually the next sheet, uh, on the other side of Washington Avenue. Uh, the intention is to tie into that line and bring that into the center core to supply where the water is needed for firefighting and, uh, explosive water purposes.
We're going next to your plan. Excuse me, just a quick deal about the roof drainage.
Roof drainage will be collected internally, not discharged on the ground. And it will be piped right into the, the storm main in William Street. Uh, this sheet is the utilities plan and it basically reiterates what I just said. Uh, here is the point of connection for the water to the main on the opposite side of Washington Avenue. Uh, sanitary gate and storm runoff would be piped separately to the combined sewer on William Street. And the reason for separately is always if the town at some point in time should be funded to separate the system. The capability is right there to tie in. Now, this sheet is the landscape plan. What it shows are the street trees to be planted in accordance with the streetscape plan of the municipality. Uh, and if there's a small area here inside the property line in front of the face of the building, that would be used for landscaping.
Mr. Chairman, this plan should reflect the streetscaping as the architect's plan did, so it doesn't do that, the pay groups and that, so.
We can amend it.
We need to amend it to mimic the architect's plan. I also spoke to someone in his office, he was going to, about the storm drainage, I asked him if he would.
Before you continue, Mr. Harris, can we square you in because I don't want there to be a problem later on. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, that we got?
I do.
The record Tom Harris, with, with engineer.
And I, uh, so this, this page mimics, you know, the architect's plans showing the streetscaping, the, uh, I also talked to, uh, someone in his office about maybe putting some, uh, planning beds along the face of the building to kind of soften it up a little bit because, you know, it's 100% the purvey's coverage as it is. And, uh, the lights, if you notice, the, uh, the town has a new light standard. It's out in front of the municipal building, there's a sample one there, so that's what, what have to be done as far as lighting.
We can work with, Mr. Frenzel, can we handle that with, uh, Mr. Harris and the staff to come up with the messers?
Absolutely.
Mr. Harris, did you put that in your report, stated in April 17th?
Well, the lights, they just put the light standard up last, last week.
Last week. But everything else was in your report?
Well, I think, uh, it was in my previous report, which, which was referenced in my last report.
From March 20th, you want to go 7?
There's one from 07 that's.
That's where you put the land, uh, streetscaping in.
I have a question, while we're still in the garage area. How is there going to be security provided for tenants for the garage area?
Peter.
We're going to have camera systems and.
He's got some. Why don't you, why don't you come on up?
Do you know, can you answer?
Okay, why don't you, uh, raise your, please, raise your right hand, with regard to this application. You swear the comment you're about to make, should be the truth.
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name.
Peter Teflinsky, last name is T as in Tom, I F as in Frank, L I N S K Y.
And how are you related to this?
Um, I am the owner of Premier Developers and partnered up with Remo to finally get this building off the ground.
Okay. But the issue of the security.
Do we maybe just finish?
All right, you can sit down. I thought he wouldn't have an answer.
He does, but.
As an engineer, I'm not going anywhere.
He does, he, he probably doesn't have that answer readily available, but we can supply the answer. Uh, you want to fix these so that you're not, you can just take them and then put them on the next one there.
This is the landscape plan that we just discussed.
And of course, we can comply with Mr. Harris's requirement. Now, the suggestion of putting in some other, I, I wasn't clear on what you exactly wanted, Tom.
A small strip of, uh, plantings or flowers along the face of the building, so.
Okay, okay. So we create a strip of dirt, we can plant in the strip of dirt, or we could put planter boxes, either one?
Up against the face of the building, low level plants.
We can manage it. Okay, next page of your plan, how's it identified?
This sheet is simply the soil erosion and sediment control plan that'll be filed with the local district.
Can we comply?
Yes, we do.
Next page, please.
Uh, the next page is simply, uh, construction details for various features of the, uh, the site in place itself, the end gap marking, the end gap line, connection to the, uh, water service, et cetera, et cetera.
Now, I'd like to go back to the page of your plan set that feels, shows the ingress and egress of parking areas. So, uh, describe again how this plan is labeled, so we can start with that.
Okay, um, this plan shows, again, a code five-story, eighty apartment, uh, structure. It gives the elevation of the basement floor at 94.35 and the elevation of the grade level floor at 105.18. Uh, it shows a point of entry at the southerly end of the Washington Avenue frontage, uh, in this particular area. That would be the entrance point into the upper floor, the one that's at 105.18. And also shows a curb cut, uh, in the northeast corner of the property adjacent to William Street, which is the lowest point in the photography on the site where the entrance would be into the lower level garage.
Now, how far is the entrance and exit area for Washington Avenue from the intersection of William and Washington?
Uh, approximately 320 feet.
And how far is the entrance area to the William Street parking garage from the intersection of the corner of Washington and William?
Approximately 85 feet.
And, um, can, in, in this particular configuration, can controls be placed in to limit at, uh, turning in different directions leaving the property? So for example, if one was leaving on Washington Avenue, restrict turns to right-hand turns only as exiting from Washington Avenue?
Sure, it, it's not a problem. At the point of exit from the garage, um, both places there would be minimally a stop sign. And if there is a need, where there is a need to limit turns onto Washington Avenue, there would be a no left turn sign as well inside the face of the building at the point of discharge from the garage.
Now, I'd like to ask you a question about the Department of Transportation and its involvement in this application, if any. Have you investigated that?
We have.
And what were your findings and what is your opinion with regard to securing the necessary permits from the Department of Transportation for allowing ingress and egress from Washington Avenue?
Washington Avenue is a state highway, uh, highway number seven. And as such, we have to apply to the Department of Transportation for a highway access permit. Uh, given the preliminary discussions that were had with the department and the understanding of what kind of traffic would be generated from this facility, uh, we've been told that it would be simply a minor access permit.
There's already curb cuts all along Washington Avenue that are used by the used car lot, isn't that correct?
There are.
Um, I have no further questions of the witness.
Any members of the board have a question? Mr. Mufuji.
The storm water and sewer, did you say it's combined?
It is in the street, yes.
Okay, I guess it depends on what part of town you're in. On the other side, it's not, okay. You mentioned the garbage, any mention about recycling? It's not. Tom, is it not combined?
No, there's no combined sewers at all in Belville.
That changes things. Stand corrected, that was you from next night, I had gotten our staff.
It's better than it's not anyway.
Well, we did, we did.
Yeah, so I'm arguing about that answer.
We are discharging separately from the building, so there will be a connection to the sanitary and there will be a connection to the storm.
So the design is not, the, the building design is separate discharge and you'll tie into the separate systems?
Yes.
So we clarify that, thank you. So, Mr. Mufuji, I'm sorry. The last question was about recycling.
Recycling can be handled, uh, through the same transfer act of room as well. Um, I assume residents would be, uh, told they are required to recycle. Recyclable would be delivered to this room. Um, I don't think there would be a separate chute, but I would, uh, from other similar developments that I've seen, the residents would be required to deposit their recyclables in this area and not going.
And it's a larger fair, it's handled recycling also?
It is.
On the parking levels, what's the aisle width between?
24 feet.
This, I'm not sure if you'd be able to answer or not. Will the parking spots be assigned to an apartment?
Yes.
And so I assume a tandem one would be assigned to a single unit?
A double unit.
No, a W, a two-bedroom unit will have a tandem. I just meant to one apartment. One apartment will have a tandem spot. And there're going to be no fights over tandem parking spaces. I had fights with my kids over tandem parking spaces in my driveway. You may have to hand this to our building department, but we recently were told we have phenomenal number of affordable housing units in town, which I think we're going to go to court on. I don't know how many affordable units would be required in your 80 unit. He can't answer that. No, I didn't, I didn't know if Mr. Harris or.
We'd have to leave it a condition in, in, in the resolution to see if they have to meet the affordable housing, whatever we're going to.
There's contributions.
Yes.
There are contributions to affordable housing.
They're offset that, that way.
Okay, I don't think anybody knows what the contribution, what the talk, the contributions are.
There's a figure, Frank, there is some, it's been a while since we approved a report like this.
Well, is there, is there an ordinance in existence that says how many have to be set aside?
So, there's no plan, there's no plan, they, because we always had, Dufflow's had zero.
Had zero requirement.
So, but there was a contribution to the affordable housing.
I agree. Can we work that out with them?
Yeah, make it a condition on a, on the resolution, I would put it.
That was it, thank you. I, I have to say, I mean, I think we're, we're relying on the, the unit computation that existed before, which did not have any requirements for affordable housing contribution in it, and that's what we're relying on. So we have no intention of complying with that contribution. And if it means that we have to have a fight with somebody over in the township, we'll do it.
Well, since there's nothing in effect right now.
That's my point.
Uh, I, I don't think we could put it in a position on, on the application. I don't know, I'm asking the attorney, he would know better than me, it's a legal question.
It's a, it's a, it's an unknown as to what's going to happen. I'll try and report something and, uh, no one really knows what is going to, what is going to happen in any town.
Okay, now, now, now my question is technically this. If there is no requirement right now in effect, you can't go back.
It'd be awkward to, uh, to do that.
You mean to go back?
Yeah.
So, so technically, can we put something in a resolution? We can't, I don't think we can.
I don't think we should.
No, you shouldn't put it in a resolution.
I'm sorry.
It's not a law, you should.
Right. It has to be with the laws, the effect of the time.
I think in this case, you can't speculate, you're, you're required to apply standards. There are no standards to apply, so therefore you can't impose something where there are no standards.
I agree.
I agree also, I think this is a point, this project has been approved.
Thank you.
Something's out there, there's an issue later that someone wants to fight about this.
That'd be, that'd be our preference, thank you very much.
The witness containing this.
Yes.
I, I had said the witness, I concluded with my.
You're concluded, so any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public of the witness based upon testimony given? Mr. Fran Antoni.
Yes, I just want to clarify the, uh, what's the depth of the property along the William Street side?
Hold on, now we got to stop.
What is the depth of the property along the William Street side?
Approximately 89 feet.
All right, you answered the question by, where is the entrance on William Street from Washington Avenue? And you said 85 feet, so we're having a four-foot entrance?
No, the, the way I interpreted the question was where is that driveway into the building in comparison to the, the intersection of the street pavement? There's about a 21st sidewalk out in front of this building, so that, when added to the 89 feet, gets us about 80 or 85 feet back from the point of the intersection.
At the beginning of the curb cut, per an entrance from the Washington Avenue?
Approximately 80, 85 feet, yes.
85 feet?
Yes.
But the whole property is only 89 feet?
But it's about 20 feet more than that to Washington Avenue sidewalk.
Well, the property on Washington Avenue is 14 feet. The sidewalks on Washington are 14 feet and set back.
Okay, so it's a five-foot difference, it's about 80 feet from the point of the curb line of Washington Avenue to the nearest point of that entrance into the lower level.
Well, your math doesn't add up. How wide is the driveway cut on William Street, the same as Washington Avenue?
It's the same, it's a 30, 30-foot curb cut and a 24-foot driveway aisle.
So if you got an 89-foot lot and take away 30, you're 59 feet from Washington Avenue.
Right.
Not 85 feet.
No, you're, you're 59 feet from the front property line.
From the beginning of the driveway cut.
Right, but you still have the sidewalk width to get to where's actually Washington Avenue track.
And is there going to be like a Washington Avenue right turn only coming out of the William Street side?
No, that's not contemplated at this time unless the town deems otherwise.
So coming out of William Street, you can make a right or a left?
Right or a left is planned right now.
All right, I also want some more clarification on the garbage thing. How is the garbage, the collection and disposal, how is the garbage gonna be collected? In separate cans or in a dumpster?
No, it actually goes into a hopper that feeds into a compactor to make it easier to handle. The compactor obviously reduces the volume, bags it, and those bags are set on the side and then moved out for curbside pickup at the appropriate time.
That's for the apartments?
Right.
Now, how about the food waste for the restaurant?
I believe the food waste could be handled in the same way.
The township is going to pick up the food waste?
It can be separated in the compactor room, and there can be arrangements made with a private quarter to pick up the restaurant waste.
We have two garbage collections a week. Is the food waste only gonna be collected twice a week then, the same collection days?
I don't have an answer for that, that's, that has to do with the restaurant operator, actually.
And the recycling, I wasn't happy with the answer to recycling. Is there gonna be separate containers for recycling?
There'll also, there'll be a separate, there'll be separate containers accessible in the compaction room for recycled, recyclable.
Right, and the final question. How will the garbage people in this compactor, how will they get to it? If the, if the food is required to be picked up by a private contractor, what provisions are made for a private contractor to get at this food waste?
The private contractors, it can have happened a few different ways. A private contractor can have a key to the compaction room. The private contractors can have a predetermined time and days of the week at which time the building maintenance personnel will either have them open or let them in when they arrive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the public? Any further questions by members of the board? I think you could call your third witness.
There are no other witnesses. Oh, you need the third witness about security, Mr. Peter Toflinski. He's not an expert, he's...
I understand.
There was a question just to Toflinski, you were sworn before about the security that would be provided in the garage areas. Can you please explain in detail how that would be done?
Aside from the camera system that would be installed throughout the garage system, excuse me, throughout the garage and the exterior of the building, we were also planning on putting drop gates, the translucent ones, so that would act as full security for all our garage entrance and exit points, and they would be controlled by either a simple remote control or a sticker that would go on a window that would read it infrared to the garage owner.
Okay, but is there also the possibility you might use a code to get in or out or not?
A code, meaning that somebody would have to get out of their car to open the garage?
Or that there would be a thing next to you that at the passenger side going in, you'd be able to press the code with the window?
I think that's a problem, Jerry, only because it would be in the public right of way.
I also think there's a lot better technology today than...
Whatever, whatever you want to go with.
Yeah, we're gonna go with the latest technology.
As long as the restaurant people can't get in there.
No, no, it's strictly for the residents of the building and, and like we said before, the parking spots are going to be assigned, one per one bedroom or tandem for the two, so everybody's gonna have their...
Now, how many tandems do you have?
Five, I don't know, I don't exactly. So, I think it's a hundred and fourteen.
That's small.
Hundred and fourteen.
Any, thanks.
Hundred and fourteen.
Hundred and fourteen, sounds good.
Well, that's not the question. What is the tandem units? The tandem spaces, how many is it?
That's the count.
So it's a hundred and fourteen, so is it total a hundred and fourteen tandems? Or is it a hundred and fourteen divided by two?
Divided by two.
Yeah, so it's a hundred and fourteen divided by two, which is a hundred fifty-seven spots.
Fifty-seven tandems.
Fifty-seven tandems equaling a hundred and fourteen spots.
But you only have, if I remember correctly...
Forty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-two two-bedrooms, so we're over...
So that's what I'm saying, how are the other tandems gonna be assigned?
It's just additional parking for the building. They will not be...
All right, how many single ones do you have?
Single, if I'm, okay, is that enough?
We're not doing the parking, are we?
Forty-five.
No. But this is gonna be a condition, but they're gonna have to be labeled.
No, a sign, that's the only condition.
Where's the new sheet?
A sign, that's it.
It's a sign, yes. But what I'm saying is, we're gonna assign two, two tandems?
Forty-five. Forty-five single spaces.
And how many single units is there?
Forty-two.
There was more singles than there was doubles.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight singles.
There's forty-eight single units. And how many parking spaces? Single parking spaces?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
Is that what you said? Oh, you said forty-five.
Right.
Forty-five and one, and what is it, one fourteen? Does that make sense?
Well, there would be extra tandem spaces you could use.
No, no, I'm saying, but they said total parking is one fifteen.
There's a total of five spaces more.
Forty-five and one fourteen. More, what, singles?
One fifty-five.
Yeah. Is that a handicap?
There's handicaps, you have a mixture of these.
Cause eight handicaps, four are excluded.
Eight handicaps that come out of the mix.
So that's included in the total number of spaces?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just saying, because if the tandems aren't assigned, there's certain ones that are not gonna be assigned.
We can handle it by rule and then, and by designation. There are gonna be some people that may not have a car, but we can handle by rule who's assigned to what spot. It'll be designated by unit.
I don't know. Any other questions by members of the board? Questions by members of the public of this witness? None, okay. Is any member of the, you're done then?
Yes.
Any member of the public wish to give testimony on this case? Mr. Fran Antoni.
Let me swear you in, Mr. Fran Antoni, if you're gonna give testimony. Why don't you? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony that you may give shall be the truth, so?
I do.
Okay, just again, state your name for the record.
Vincent Fran Antoni.
Thank you.
Board member, I just ask you to really seal and concrete the plans for the garbage in the home. It's a problem, right up the street block two, I have a problem with a restaurant next door to my place. I want some definite plans that you're gonna impose on them, how that food waste is gonna be removed, and if it's gonna be removed daily and by who. Now, the forty-three years I own this building, thirty-five, no problem until I got a restaurant there. They are not complying with the law, although they should. And I've never had ants and mice, and now I got both, I had to make a complaint to the health department.
But how are they not complying?
Because they bring, we only have two garbage collect, like, they testified they don't let the town garbage collection figure out. We have two a week. The restaurant is keeping it for three or four days between garbage collection. In the ninety, eighty, ninety degree temperature, it smells, and they put it in double, where?
Where are they keeping it?
They put it outside in the yard. Now, this is gonna be inside in the parking garage, which can contain the odor of your morgue. My two tenants can't open their kitchen windows from the odor. I made a complaint, an informed complaint to the building inspector just recently.
Who's talking about this?
But this has to be definite. It's gotta be removed daily, food waste, it can't sit for three or four days. And who's gonna remove it? And where it's gonna be stored?
Mr. Fran Antoni, as you know, the Board of Health is gonna be involved in this because it's a restaurant. And if they have private removal, they can structure whatever pickup time they want. I would think more than twice a week is, or I would think twice a week's a little low for a restaurant, but they can structure whatever they, whatever they have to to get this done. I would not want garbage to be outside too long.
Mr. DiLorenzo, how is that handled in the town? So we can have it on the record?
The health department handles it, they have to get the private pool into the...
Okay.
To get a private dumpster.
But the health department would put, when it has to be picked up or how often?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can set...
So that would come under the health department?
Right, but we can set a condition too, if you want. You wanna say they need to be picked up at least three times or daily?
But we don't know what kind of restaurants they'll be.
We don't know, depending on, depending on what it's gonna be, how busy it's gonna be, that's what they go by, the volume.
I think they're gonna have to see what kind of business they have to determine whether...
So we could put a condition leaving that up to the health department, correct?
Right, that's what we should know.
Yeah, you could put, the health department may, because I could put on a zoning permit too, Jeff.
Okay, perfect.
You know, both of us.
We'll leave it to your discretion, and the health department. Yes, I agree.
I do feel like something definite, because I said, we already have regulations in the health department, but in many cases, this is not being enforced.
Well, that's up to the health department to enforce.
Right, but I...
That's not the board's job.
In your approvals, I want to state that, especially approvals, there's gotta be a way to control...
Mr. Fran Antoni, we can't impose something if we don't know what's gonna be there. Or how often it may need to be picked up based upon what is going to be there.
They testified, it's only gonna be a restaurant, not commercial. That was the testimony.
I understand.
You asked them specifically.
There's different types of restaurants.
Restaurants, all restaurants serve food.
We're gonna leave it to the health department. We can't micromanage this because we don't know what it's gonna be or how it's gonna work.
Is it takeout or is it sit-down too?
Yeah, so, we'll leave it to the Board of Health, and if there's problems, that's...
That's where you complain to.
I just hope we don't have that problem there. And as far as the other, I'm going back to the seventies, I wrote a letter to the zoning board, I approve of this mixed use belonging to two floors of apartments. This is a hundred percent impervious coverage, this exceeding the density is gonna hurt us in the long run.
Mr. Fran Antoni, it's already been approved ten years ago.
I understand.
And we cannot rule on that.
Well, again, they put their testimony, and I just wanted to prove, I approve of these units within our code. When we give all these variances, that's what's gonna hurt us in the long run. So this kind of mixed use is good for the town if done in the proper proportions. Don't object to this as over-density and...
That's already been ruled on, it has nothing to do with us tonight.
You can't stop me from making my testimony.
No, because your testimony's based on something from ten years ago, which we have no control over. Now, if they were asking for more than eighty units, then you could open your mouth tonight about that. But this is done and buried. It's ten years old and us, we have no jurisdiction over that tonight. Only what we have jurisdiction over, please.
And as they refresh your memory as to what was pre-approved, I'm refreshing my memory of what I previously objected to.
You're welcome. Any other members of the public wish to give testimony? You must, Mr. Cross-Examiner, Mr. Fran Antoni, Mr. Adorelli.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. May you, will you sum up then? If you want.
I think that the proofs are self-evident that this is consistent with the approvals that were previously granted. I think we've managed to streamline the application and streamline the presentation, and I'm not gonna belabor it with a lot of hot wind in the air.
Thank you. Members of the board, your pleasure. On what conditions would you do them also?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, put this with the conditions that we first approved ten years ago. Make sure that they're provided by.
Okay.
And...
Mr. DiLorenzo said, regarding the health department, whenever they...
Whenever they realize what type of restaurant's gonna be there. And also the remarks of Mr. Harris.
Right.
Abandoning the use card ownership at the time of demo permit.
Right.
Tom, did you request that the, that the plans be amended to reflect the architect's streetscape as opposed to...
Yes.
Okay.
And the lighting.
For our conditions, and planters up against the face...
And the lighting.
And the new type of lighting.
The new type of lighting, that's just been approved.
And then the plantings up against the face of the building.
Yeah, it's chairman.
Yes.
So, it's for the record, you know, at this application, originally came and, you know...
Oh, and one more thing, I want to interrupt you, and the security, the security that was mentioned.
Okay.
That that's going to be in effect, yes. Continue, Mr. Valano, I'm sorry.
It's harmful, it's harmful. So, one of the things I just wanna remind you, and it's probably one of the most outspoken on this particular application, and the size and the height, and particularly the height. And so, for myself, I think we've come closer to where I, you know, feel is more reasonable, you know. We still have the same parking, which I'm happy about. I think the fact that we increased more one-bedrooms also makes me happy, right? It minimizes the impact, you know, it's, it's not perfect. But it's a good use of this particular piece of property. And so, I'm with Mr. Gennaro, I don't know.
So you're seconding, seconding?
I am seconding.
Okay, so Mr. Gennaro has made the motion, and has been seconded by Mr. Valano. And I wanna mention from ten years ago, I agree with Mr. Valano a hundred percent. I am much more happier that there's more one-bedroom units. And also the concern back then was whether our hook and ladder could reach the roof. And now I think we're closer to reaching the roof. So, much closer, yes. Two floors difference is a big difference. So, anybody else wish to give a statement on this?
You just had my engineer's report of April seventeen.
Yes, must be complied with.
Mr. DiLorenzo, did we miss anything on your behalf?
No, I think it's good, you can just put my report in there too.
Okay.
Okay, put Mr. DiLorenzo's. Okay.
The COA was good then?
I'm gonna... Yeah, I think the board's feeling with regard to COA was that it's a no.
It's a no issue right now because it's looking in effect.
No.
That's how I look at it.
I agree.
Okay. So we have a, is there anything else that has to be added here before we...
Frank, Frank did indicate and showed me ordinances which apparently are currently in effect for certain types of projects and with the COA requirement. I don't know when that came into effect, I don't know if it was in effect at the time this was originally approved.
Let me ask you a question, second. That requirement is on the African, right? So, that's the bottom line, if, you know, we can't...
Whether we say it or not, it is what it is.
I mean, Mr. Coswell, he would quite be, if we say, oh, well, forget about it. We don't have that authority to say it, forget about it.
No, I think, I think the answer to it is exactly that, that you don't, I'm asking you to not say anything because we have to comply.
So we can get clear here. Mr. DiLorenzo, is there an ordinance, my thought?
My thought is this.
Well, there's an ordinance, I would like to know what ordinance we have.
I wanna finish the thought.
Second discussion yet?
Yes, it's already seconded. We're on discussion.
Can I say something to you?
Sure, we're on discussion.
Well, I'm happy to say that this is an available business kind of buildings and restaurants, because that end of Washington Avenue has been dead for ten years.
And I think that's why we approved it ten years ago.
Well, I'm glad something's lit, it's livened up again, this way we...
Let me know when you're done. I'll continue when I was done.
Warren Cola.
Warren Cola.
Warren Cola.
Yeah, Cola. Go ahead.
Regardless of what this board might think, if there is something in place, we could not dismiss it if we wanted to. That's all I'm saying. We are unsure on what the status is, right? So we shouldn't comment on what the status is. I think the ordinance, if there is one, will be enforced regardless of what we might say or not say. Am I correct, Mr.?
Yes, we don't have to say every other ordinance in the township has to be complied. It's there. We'll leave that for another day.
Well, he said this.
How do you know this?
I don't know, I don't know.
I'm just asking Mr. DiLorenzo if there's an ordinance, because somebody brought this ordinance up, it wasn't me. But I know there was something that was passed when I was first put on this board. And I'm going back to nineteen eighty-seven, okay? And it was done when Mr. Fran Antoni was a commissioner. I remember the ordinance. And there was a mention that so many units had to be set aside. Now, if that's what Mr. DiLorenzo's talking about, and that ordinance has never been taken off the books, would they have to comply with that, Mr. DiLorenzo? I'm asking you.
No, Jerry, it's not that ordinance we're talking about, it's something that's in the zoning. the zoning.
Okay, well, whatever, if there is an ordinance on the books that has to be complied with, you would take care of that, correct?
Right.
So we don't have to deal with it, okay?
That's my point.
Thank you, so let's vote and get this over with.
We cannot supplement that ordinance.
No, we cannot.
No.
And an ordinance can't circumvent a state statute either, so go ahead.
Okay, guys.
All right, can we have the vote then?
I'm waiting to hear.
The vote is to approve, the vote was, the approval was, motion was made by Mr. Giannoli, seconded by Mr. Valano, with the conditions that have all been listed.
For an amended site.
For an amended site plan. Court call roll.
Bazeo.
Yes.
Giudano.
Yes.
Montalbano.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valano?
Yes.
Don Priscilla.
Yes, proof seven to nothing, there will be a fifteen-minute reset.